Phelps Health and John Butts, the city administrator, and Lou Magnets, both honors with their presence today to have a conversation about the status of the virus in Phelps County. And Andrew Shealy is here for the Phelps County Focus. Thanks to all for being here. Ed, if we may, could we begin with you and tell us what the world looks like from your point of view?
Yeah, let me start. I'm a numbers guy, so I start statistics, so we'll get into details in a second. So these are numbers that I pulled yesterday, which are already outdated, but worldwide cases of COVID-19, 1.9 million worldwide deaths, 118,000. Cases in the US now at 572,000, deaths in the US 23,000. Cases in Missouri, 4,400. I saw this morning that number, 4,500 now. Deaths in Missouri, yesterday was 114, I saw 123 this morning. Cases in Phelps County, one. Deaths in Phelps County, zero. So those are the numbers that are out there. So the next set of statistics are Phelps Health statistics, I think they're relevant. We started testing for COVID on March 16th, so we're about four weeks into this at this point. At Phelps Health, there's been 145 tests. And so you see a lot, every once in a while, I'll see something about to the fact that people aren't being tested at Phelps Health. 145 tests over the last four weeks. The first two weeks, we tested 50, 50 people. So about 3.6 people per day. Those first two weeks, the only ability we had to test and have that, those tests processed were through the state lab. And the process that was in place at that time is we had to get the state lab's permission in order to test and have those, those processed. There are many more we would have liked to have tested in those first two weeks, but that was what was allowed by the state and what we tested. Over the last two weeks, we've tested 94 patients or 94 individuals that have come through. That's 6.7 per day. So we've doubled over the last two weeks the number of people that were testing on a daily basis. The number of positive tests that have come back out of the 145 tests administered at Phelps Health, four. I will say, none of those four were residents of Phelps County. Number of patients that have been admitted with COVID, zero at Phelps Health. And, and I mentioned our increased testing over the last two weeks. We did sign agreements with Quest, with two commercial labs, Quest and BioReference Labs, which we've been using for those other tests. Now, the, the advantage of having commercially available tests and, and in addition to the state is that we can test people with the state said no to. The downside to some of the commercially available tests is that the, the period of time it takes for us to get results back is much longer. So with the state, we courier up early each morning. Has to be at the state, I think by eight o'clock, plus or minus a few minutes. We get those results back by four or five that day. So it's a pretty quick turnaround. Same day that we take the test up, we get it back.
Is this the test that's invasive to, to back of the?
Yes, it's, it's, it sounds horrific to go through, but yes, it's, it's, they're all done the same way. It's the same, same supplies and everything. With, with these commercial available tests, we can test more, but it can be three to five days, up to seven days before we get some of the results back. So much longer duration. We still prefer the state testing process. So if we can get the state to approve one, that's the route we go. If we, if we, if the state says no, but we believe this, you know, based on the conditions of the patient, that they're appropriate for testing, we go ahead and use these commercial available labs, even though there's a longer duration of time.
What's the criteria for, for state to do that?
They'll look at, they'll, there are certain screening criteria that they use, and it's, it's, it's based off CDC screening criteria. But they'll get a full picture. I mean, we will call up there, and there's a, a two-way conversation that takes place with the person on the other end of the line. And they'll go through everything from the conditions of the patient to whom they may or may or may not have had contact with, where they may or may not have traveled, and all that goes into the decision-making on whether or not it's appropriate that that patient are.
This so-called comorbidity or extenuating health factors?
It could, yeah. So those are the statistics. Some of what we've spent quite a bit of time doing over the last, you know, we went through the initial setup of our screening processes for COVID and just some of the initial operational changes. But over the last couple of weeks, we spent a lot of time on search planning. So what happens? The good news today is, no, as, as I'm sitting here, that we know of, no resident of Phelps County has it. What happens if it comes here and there's a, there's a surge? There's a significant number of people that require hospitalization. So we've done a lot of planning internally to, to determine how many we can take care of and how we're going to do that. So we're, we're pretty much in the final stages of that search planning, but we believe we can handle a total patient load of about 246 patients. Give you some point of reference, our average census is probably about 90. So we're talking about a significant ramp up in the number of patients that we could take care of at Phelps. We have enough vents to care for 50 patients that might require ventilation. The other piece of that, we spent a lot of time on our staffing models because it's one thing to have the facilities to do that. It's another thing to have a staff to be able to care for that many patients where you're going from an average census of 90, ramping up to that. So we've, we've done a lot of work on areas of the hospital that aren't as busy right now because of this, and how those employees could be used in different care models to, to care for that number of patients. We've also, we've also identified a number of renovations that are required at the facility in order to see this patients. So things like create negative air pressure wings, negative pressure wings, or COVID wings, if you want to call it that, out of some of our current regular patient care areas. Identifying potential ICU locations in addition to our current ICU. That's about 18 beds, so they couldn't handle 50 patients on beds. We have, we have to find other locations in the hospital to do that. We've done that. And so, and then in the emergency department, creating negative pressure rooms there. So I mean, the idea of the negative pressure rooms is you, you don't want someone with positive COVID allowing that, those air molecules to disperse and then contaminate others. You want that pressure going outside. And so a lot of, a lot of facility renovations to make sure that we're, we're trying to keep anybody that's in the facility as safe as possible. We still, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, it also requires supplies to care for that many patients. That's maybe one of our biggest challenges, as, and we're no different than most other healthcare stations at this point. Just a current operational assessment at Phelps Health. We're still in it. We still have postponed all elective non-time sensitive surgeries. And that is primarily to conserve our, our, our PPE. We have postponed elective non-time sensitive diagnostic procedures like imaging procedures. And that is primarily to reduce unnecessary interactions with individuals where it might spread the, spread the disease, where, where there's no real reason to have that happen. In our clinics, well, as routine follow-up visits have been postponed. Although, one of the things that's happened as of this, the federal government has loosened some of the restrictions they had on telehealth visits, televisits. And quite frankly, this should have been done much sooner than a crisis like this. But it has allowed us to utilize some technology to have interactions with patients that previously we wouldn't have been able to, been able to do. So we're, we're really ramping up the use of that technology to continue to care for patients, even though they may not physically be able to come into the hospital. Doesn't work for all situations, but for certain situations, it works well. Our inpatient census has been lower than normal, which is just, I think it's, part of it is because we're doing less surgeries, less of the elective surgeries, so that has decreased some of the inpatient census. Our fear is that some of it is that people that might have, might have had a little bit of a chest pain, would have, would have went into the emergency room before. They're now trying to weigh the risk between, is this real? And what risk do I have by going into somewhere that where there may be some risk of contamination? So we, we think that's part of the decrease in the census also. People are making calculated risks. Hopefully not bad calculated risks, but calculated risks about receiving care, which, which is just a reality of our current situation. Our overall revenue, so from a business perspective, is down, down about 45 to 50% from where it was a couple of months ago. So, you know, the, the month of March is probably the worst financial mark, financial month in the history of the hospital. The month of April will be the, the worst month in the history of the hospital. So again, it's just the reality of the current, current situation that we're dealing with. We instituted a labor pool program. Started a couple of weeks ago now, it's to run through May, May 2nd. And what we're doing with that is, is we are, for those areas that are seeing less volume, we're pulling employees out of those areas and redeploying them to other areas to serve need. So, for example, are the, the tent is pretty much that with employees that were working in other areas besides the emergency room for this. So out of our surgery area, a lot of our CRNA is working that. We have physicians that don't normally work in the emergency room or work in the respiratory screening tech. So really trying to redeploy individuals to different areas as, as needs exist. Some other operational changes. We've pretty much, with very limited exceptions, gone to no visitor policy at the hospital. That's very consistent with what's going on at other institutions, St. Louis, Springfield, all over the state. We don't allow meetings onsite, including community education programs. One of the things about healthcare is we love to meet. We meet to talk about when we're going to meet. And so, well, that doesn't sound like a big deal from the outside. Eliminating face-to-face meetings is a big deal within healthcare environment. We've also, we, we continue to not allow students on campus. It's one of the things that we use as a recruiting mechanism. And quite frankly, our employees and our physicians enjoy interacting with students and teaching. So that's been a big deal to, to staff that, that those folks haven't been allowed on campus. We have approximately 200, and I think it's probably more than that, 200-ish employees working from home. We sent them home because their job functions allowed them to do that. So that's happening. We continue the epic build, the, the new EMR that's scheduled to go live October 1st. We haven't backed down on that schedule. But many of the other strategic initiatives that we got in the ways that we're holding this point. So just some occupational health issues. Every morning, every employee goes through screening before their shift. So when you go, you know, this morning I walked into the, the entrance of the EDCI, and there's a screening table there to get your temperature, temperature taken, just to make sure our employees, at least aren't showing symptoms of, of, of COVID. If an employee travels outside the area, they must self-monitor on return for 14 days. And if they go to any kind of hot zone, we, we require them to be away from work for 14 days as part of that. And we, it always encourage, heavily encourage social distancing, including really asking our employees not to travel throughout the facilities, areas they don't really need to be. It's, it's not uncommon at break time, things like that, for employees to get out and just walk around a little bit to kind of to take, you know, to burn out some of the stress of the day. We've really discouraged inside the facility a lot of unnecessary travel. Because if I'm, if I'm, if I'm a carrier and I'm walking through the facility and I'm affecting others, it's not a good, not a good reason for something that isn't necessary. So we've been very cautious with that. Supplies continue to be our prior nemesis at this point. They're not as readily available as we would like them to be, and what is available is much more expensive than it was two or three months ago. I don't think price gouging is an inappropriate term in terms of what's going on. Some of the things that were, you know, particularly focused on are the, the COVID testing kits. So the swabs that are needed in order to test for it. And 95 masks, and there's been a lot of publicity on what we've done with ESTI. In terms of them using 3D printing to develop masks. Isolation gowns, which have been very difficult to find, although we found, fortunately, there's a, there's a company in Lebanon, Missouri that has changed. They're a marine company that has changed their operations around to big isolation gowns, believe it or not at this time. And are going to be providing us with a significant number of those over the next couple of weeks. So that's been a big fight for us. Face shields and then ear loop surgical masks, things like this, still in short supply. Especially as we think about what a surge might look like. So today we have supplies, but do we have enough that there's a surge? So that's a big question. I just mentioned on the, the, the social distancing, this kind of goes into the search planning too. The models that are out there and kind of what our expectations were maybe through two, two and a half weeks ago have changed dramatically based off of what's happened with social distancing. And the, in, in many cases, the models presume social distancing will continue for some period. Some, sometime into May, maybe through May. But we've gone through, the models a few weeks ago showed this peak that far exceeded in Missouri, our ability to care for the number of patients that we need to care for. And the ones that have come out more recently, first of all, have the peak closer. So towards the end of April, it was sometime in May. So the peak a little bit closer and much lower than what, what it was before. So those are all good things. It, it's because I, I think Missouri has had the advantage that, that we're in the middle of the country, you know, the, the, and we've had the chance to read the news and see what's happened in other areas. And particularly in, in Phelps County. I think, I think just from my interactions being out in the community, even before the stay-at-home orders, people were taking this seriously. They were seeing what was going on in other places. And I think that's why, you know, we're not reporting the same number of cases that you see in some of the other areas, even some of the other, other areas of the state. That's kind of my prepared summary, but we have to answer any questions.
Very thorough, Ed. Thank you. Yeah, we, we've got to ponder our own order, you know, just as the city and the governor. Those are tough questions. We want to get them right. Appreciate your input and help us get here there. What questions do you have?
What's our, have you guys developed a criteria for when you might open back up, say, orthopedic surgeries?
No, so it, it's different things for different areas. So we have, it's one thing to talk about, when do we start to ramp things back up? Because of the, you know, the, the business strain on us, it's, it's important for us to recover when appropriate. The, 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 on the surgical piece, our biggest limiting factor there continues to be supplies. So even if we feel like today that COVID is gone, and we don't have to worry about interactions with others passing that disease, we still have issues related to supply of PPE that we have to address in those areas. So that's, that's probably a, will ramp up the slowest in terms of return. In terms of our diagnostic imaging and things like that, that's an area we can probably ramp up a little quicker as we become more comfortable that that, that the likelihood of transmission has decreased. The, the other thing, I, I meant to say this, and I did, as part of the presentation, is especially when I was talking about the, the curve, what we're seeing right now, to me, is a little bit of fool's gold too. We've, we've seen these, we've seen these, the, the curve decrease or flatten. That's all based on this presumption of continued social distancing. So one of my fears is we get very comfortable, we get too comfortable too quickly. And we start to lax things, and then we see a return to the, the, the curve increasing as we, as we become more lax. So, so I think, I think we, I guess my short answer to your question is I think things will come along. We'll, we'll turn at different, different speeds in different areas for different reasons.
You mentioned there have been four confirmed cases at Phelps Health diagnosed there. They aren't from Phelps County, and they weren't admitted to the hospital.
That's correct.
So what was the dispensation? Do you report those cases to CDC? And then are those, those positive cases tracked by CDC?
So, so reporting on that has changed a little bit. I'm, I'm not as familiar with that as some in the organization, how that works. Up until about midweek last week, my understanding was, we really reported that information to the, to the county health department that was involved in the case. Starting about midweek last week, that requirement changed at the state health departments. But we're not directly reporting to CDC. We're working with, you know, the, the health department. Yeah, state level.
And so it sounds to me like you, you're ramped up to take care of coronavirus patients. Do you anticipate patients being moved from other areas which may be, you know, under greater pressure and unable to take care of the patients? Do you anticipate Phelps Health as being a place where they could be seen?
One of my fears early on was that St. Louis could really innovate it. They would push patients down this direction, which sounds really good, right? Where I'm sitting here, I'm saying I want business. There would be patients we would be seeing, but, but then if the surge came here, then what? If our, if our facility is filled with patients from St. Louis. From what I'm reading, reading and hearing, I don't think that's going to happen. St. Louis seems to believe that they have the facilities, capacity to handle what their current projections are. And so I don't think that's occurring. I'm, I'm less worried about that today than maybe I am a couple of weeks ago.
I'm sorry.
Alternate care sites that they could pop up.
Alternate care sites being?
Right, there's one right now that's getting ready in St. Louis's hometown. So they could pop up to be hospitals. So the state is looking more at, instead of bringing them to other hospitals, taking them to alternate care sites.
That would keep what you're worried about from happening.
Yeah.
You know what's staggering? And you've mentioned supply problems. If every medical facility in the country has to anticipate to serve, no wonder we're short of PPEs, ventilators.
Well, and, and, you know, these things have tended to go where the immediate need is. And so while, while in Phelps County, we've had no cases. We, but, but the fact that there's been such a great need in New York and Washington, out of Oregon, as that's where things have gone. And created the, the short, shortcomings here in terms of the availability of PPE. Unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of this was produced in China. And so the supply, supply chains, even as they've opened back up, have included a lot of going overseas in order to obtain some of the supplies that we need. So that's created difficulty.
Yeah, okay. We believe that people coming through the tent, there are people that haven't been tested, that some, that your people there have presumed maybe have it, so they've been told to go, go home and quarantine for 14 days. Is there follow-up on those people?
Uh, yes, there are. And, and I'll let Ashley speak to that. Her department actually is, is one that monitors those.
So the people that, that haven't been tested, but are presumed maybe, do you, do you do the same sort of
Yes.
follow-up as people who've tested positive?
The numbers that came out from Phelps Health surprised me to see that there were 218 self-quarantined. We knew of 30.
That, those are, those are in addition, that includes the the ones that were tested also.
And does also include out-of-county people, those people you've tested?
Yeah, that would be everybody. So that's, we explained some of that too.
But yes, if they are told to self-quarantine and not test, and we know about them, they're contacted twice a day. Or symptom check, temperature checks, how are you doing? At home, they are at home, yes. And we don't call at the same time every day, it's super fast. We've had some instances where they were quarantined, we'd be called, that, oh, they're at such a place, they call, or not at such and such place. But yes, we do keep them very close.
Okay, that's good.
And we keep that relationship that, you know, symptoms do develop, do not just show up at the hospital. Call us, call ahead of time, make sure they know you're coming, follow the instructions they give you. They may tell you to come at a different entrance. They might have you sit in your car first. So there are very, very well the steps that are expected.
I think that's one of the wisest things you guys did, is that we can't test everybody because the state's not authorized, or we don't have the kids, whatever reason. We didn't test, they don't fit the criteria. But let's presume that you do have it and go home for 14 days. I mean, I think that would wise, because that's and, and we presume that most people did.
That's correct, yeah. Sorry, what was the number that you have been quarantining or calling on?
And I saw a most promising report a week, 10 days ago from Abbott Labs, where they had developed an instant read test. They were going to make 50,000 of them a day, starting a week ago last week. Have you heard anything about that?
I ha, I haven't heard about that. There are analyzers that allow, and we own one, that will allow us to do our own onsite processing. The problem is, is getting supplies that they don't like to do that. So even, even if, we would love to start doing that ourselves today. That way we wouldn't worry about creating
Sure.
tests to, to some of these other commercial labs, but the supplies aren't available to do ourselves.
Is that some kind of chemical, or what kind of supplies does it?
Yeah.
It's not swabbed?
No, it's not swabbed. Although the swabs are an issue also, but that's more related to the chemical itself.
To me, that's
So that was one of the topics last night.
We're going to have trouble hearing you, Ashley, I'm sorry. And those folks that, that are on internet probably would too. So if you could try it again.
The state and local health departments have twice weekly conference calls. So one of the topics last night on the conference call was these rapid tests, rapid tests. And they have the machines dispersed several locations across the state. They will not disclose those locations because they cannot access supplies. So even at the state level, they've got contracts, they've got it out there. They cannot access not only the swabs that are needed, but what they're having trouble getting is the quality control tests.
To me, that's, this, this is a layman talking, but that's still a good. Immediate response. Who do you need to quarantine? Who's got it? Who can go to work? Who can't? And, and know it in 15 minutes. That was a promotion for the Abbott Lab test. Now, would Abbott Lab be the one that's producing the scarce ingredient?
Now that I know that, and I know that the machines that are dispersed across the state were not through a contract with DHSS. I can't say they said DSS, but I'm not exactly sure that they said. It wasn't even the state lab that contracted them.
So these, these folks that are, that maybe have gone through the tent over here and are requested to, to go home and self-isolate, are we calling those folks quarantined? Is that, is, is that?
Yes. And when, and when we call them, we do offer them the option, there are other labs. And a, a good portion, a good portion of them, we are able to get to a different private lab, get tested and we can deposit. But they are not stuck by the criteria of the state.
John, Ed, I've got a question, but it's, it's kind of just a HR question. So discouraging travel, I guess that's just sort of a patient record, you should travel, decide what they, what they're looking for or something. Do you, when they come back, it's 14-day self-quarantine for their return, is that still allowed under their vacation leave? Or are you doing that under an order for self-quarantine?
So, so what, what we've done internally is, is an employee is required to be off because of, because our policies related to this. There, there's a special, well, special statute that it's, it's in effect ours, that, that people accrue that are sort of short-term disability normally. We've allowed them to access those as opposed to taking their paid time off for, for that purpose. So that's how we've handled that, so a little different. So that's how we've handled that, so a little different in this, right, unique because of our specific situation.
Lou, anything?
A question for Ed. Your surge capacity. So the nature of my question is, when do we start having discussions in the city to change? Plus context on that. So with the peak coming in late April, do you think there's a chance that that peak would overwhelm your surge capacity? When you're saying that it's manageable?
I, I'm saying that this point with the projections and the presumption of social distancing, that the peak is manageable is very.
That's really encouraging.
And it's good news.
Yeah, Lou, we will be rested with the same thing. Do we anticipate that the governor's order will, stay-at-home order will continue after the 24th at midnight? Ashley, you have any thoughts on it? No, I would read the governor's mind, huh? Well, I don't know.
I think it would be wise. I think the steps are still working. I think the 24th is going to put us in a projected peak time. So I think they're completely back it off. I, I just don't see that. Now, do I see him modifying it and maybe tearing it down a little bit possibly?
Okay.
I would caution doing too much drastic within the two weeks right after Easter because there, you're going to have people that did not abide by this. They see a peak, or they, they start seeing cases.
Well, we had a conversation this morning, what a tear down. I can't imagine how a tear down relaxation would look.
Well, the city could tear it, I would just, by just going to the state's.
Yes.
And get out of this nonsense of who's essential or who's not essential.
By just going to what Lou up to?
Going to the state's guidelines. If you ask me, what do I think the city's next step would be? It would be to replace our ordinance and adopt the, the governor's order.
I mean, I agree with that. I think I've told maybe John or some others, I mean, it's, it's odd the way it's set up now in that I can walk down the street 60 from somebody, but as soon as we turn into Kent story, we're in store. It'd still be 60 apart. But we're, but what we're doing is not kosher. So that's the thing. I think you're speaking to is it go to not distinguishing between essential and non-essential. But if you social distance and there's less than 10 people in your business, and you're doing it right, perhaps that's the first step, the next tier of movement. Restaurants are, and you're a different animal, I think, you know? And that you've got waiters hovering over you, you've got six people sitting at the table. And so they're a different, a little bit different animals.
Yeah, that's tough. We're so pleased with the restaurant and beverage industry and that you just, no way to do that without person-to-person contact. And that's, that's most unfortunate.
Yes, sir. So I've got a question. How do we know the social distancing is a variable that is responsible for the flattening of the curve? And not something else like the natural course of the disease outbreak? If we do not reduce the social distancing and see an increase in activity, we may not know.
Who wants it?
I don't know if there's a way to answer that. That's, I think it's an educational guess for most people, that you're not going to catch it if you're not near somebody. And while that's perfectly legitimate thought that we're not going to know until we get back together again, I'm not sure what's the role of guys on that.
You think the best science can give us here? We have to go with that for the person who's calling in. We don't know. We assume that it's successful, something's working. We can hope that it's running its course, but that might be wishful thinking. And it's a gamble, we're not ready to take, break, keep social distance. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, sir.
Can I change topics? Okay, since I've got Ed here. I lost my doctor. I have 30 years, Donovan Bowles, my doctor, for me. My wife's doctor, Mary Brown, she's leaving. So we were going through your roster of doctors last night. You are woefully short of that. Maybe not woefully, that's not.
No, I, I, I think there's available, I'll, I'll work with you on availability. We have, we have plenty of capacity in terms of family practice providers.
Is that, is that a difficult avenue for people to recruit?
It is, yeah. It is, it is one of the greater needs. And, um, uh, medical professionals have over the last 10 to 15 years have tended to buy our specialties than just general family practice. So it's, it's not an easy recruit, but we do have available capacity right now.
And I know we've talked, and I apologize for sounding like a guitar with one string, but, uh, but interventional cardiologists. Do we have a full-time interventional cardiologist?
We do that, yes, Dr. Shockett.
Okay.
Is full-time. We have, uh, Dr. Spadero, who is here three days a week. And we currently, of course, this has changed a lot of things, including our recruit, recruitment process. But we are talking to another interventional cardiologist about possibly coming here, so.
As I notice, I'm, I'm over the flight pattern. I live over the flight pattern.
Yeah.
And it seems like there's less helicopters flying out of the region.
Yeah, so, and that's probably true because we are, with Dr. Shockett there, we, we have expanded our capacity. One of the things that will help in terms of creating a 24/7 international program, in addition to the physician, if you have to have a physician. But we do have a second cardiac categorization lab that's scheduled to come online this fall. And so that's important as well in terms of creating a, a, a real interventional cardiology program. Because you can't have one machine be doing something, something a lifeblood on it. And then somebody comes from emergency room that is in urgent need. So that, that really doesn't lend itself to a, a, a full-time program like we really like to have. So that second lab will come on this fall. And then, you know, it's chicken and egg too. You don't need the second lab till you have the second full-time interventional cardiologist. But sure is easier to get the second interventional cardiologist if they know it's the second lab, right?
Right.
So, um, so we, we've gone ahead and are, are installing that lab that the, the certificate of need has been passed by the state of Missouri. So all that's, all that piece is done, it's just a matter of getting a lab here and doing construction to put in the vault that already existed.
Well, I applaud you guys. I mean, over the years, you guys have really responded to the needs of the people, whether, whether it be nephrology, whether it be cardiology, regardless of what it is, you guys have seemed to be able to respond and being able to recruit physicians to, in sometimes difficult circumstances.
We do our best.
Yeah, I think you do a good job.
Looking at that, uh, cardiology, you mentioned earlier, folks with, with chest pains or something may be hesitant to go to the emergency room when really they may really need to go and, and have a heart cap.
Yeah.
My wife needed that just a couple of months ago. And so can you assure the public that if, if they have a, you know, a heart pain and it's bad, that, that they're safe to come to our emergency?
They, they should come to the emergency room if they're, if they're concerned about that. So one of the advantages of the screening test is that it introduces less potential for transmission inside the emergency room itself. I can't guarantee, I would be, I would, I cannot guarantee that there will, there's zero chance of transmission inside the emergency room or anywhere else.
Right.
But part of the advantage of the screening tent is it keeps patients with, with that potential from most likely not having to come inside the facility.
Keep them segregated.
Yeah.
To keep the emergency room.
Yeah.
As safe as, you know, like possible at this time for those who need emergency treatment, so.
So, so I, I think if I was having chest pains, I would go to the emergency room. But then I'll give you a personal example. We're talking about my children before, before we started here. I've got a three-year-old daughter. Last week she fell on, uh, out in the driveway, hurt her arm. Three months ago, and this was like eight o'clock at night. Three months ago, I might have brought her into the emergency room. In that instance, I said, I weighed the risk. What's the risk of waiting till tomorrow and see if I can get into the orthopedic department? And I, I said, it's probably safer to do that at this point. So I think you have to be, you just have to be smart about it. If you're having chest pains, if you're having life-threatening things, go to the emergency room. That is the most appropriate thing you can do. If you're having some type of other condition that, uh, the time sensitivity is not urgent, like, like the hurt arm, that can wait till the next one. So I think, I think it's, uh, it's just, it's, it's a judgment people are going to have to make.
Is the emergency room still seeing a, a good number of, uh, drug overdose, that type of?
We, we have, yes, we have, uh, that, that has not changed unfortunately. There are other things going on.
How about, uh, automobile accidents? It seems to be less traffic, but.
You know, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't talked or heard about that. My presumption would be that there's a lot less, but I really don't know that. That's just from, uh, reading, reading what's going on in the community. Said seeing most of those automobiles around.
My insurance company sent me a check because.
Well, that's what, that's what the commercial says mine's doing too, so.
You haven't seen it yet?
Never seen it yet, yeah.
If I may jump back to the business situation, any chance that some of the federal assistance will be available to help you to these stuff months?
I, I think there will be some that will offset some of it. I don't think, I don't think, uh, that will, that will make us whole. I think, uh, I think we've had the advantage of, of years and years of wise, the douchery money management by our board. And the boards over the last many, many, many years have us put in a situation where we're not in crisis with this. I'm, I'm on frequent conference calls with other CEOs and other places in the state of Missouri that are worried about how they can pay.
Oh, my.
So fortunately, we're not in that situation because of, not because we're less far ahead than these other places in terms of what it's doing to the business, but because we've, we've been wise with our money management over a long period of time.
Right, anything else?
Yeah, you don't take temperature of your employees when they come to work, do you? You do.
Ashley does? Hey, Ashley, what do, huh?
Twice a day.
Twice a day? Okay.
I can't, I can't go down. It's almost like I got to build, I got to get out.
We tried to cover the waterfront here. Ashley, anything you would add?
I do, I have a question. Um, this is for Ed, he may or may not be able to answer this. Missouri Hospital Association, they put out a daily, uh, hospital utilization and a situation awareness report. Are we reporting this, we just felt self-report to that?
Yeah, there's a, uh, it's an online, I don't know the specifics of it, but there's, uh, an online report that we complete to allow, so I think our data doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like, it's two-thirds of hospitals in the state, I think.
Yes, but it keeps climbing. It says 114 to 154.
Yeah, so I, I don't know where the, the 154 hospitals sounds high to me. I don't think that's, so there's got to be some other type of provider that's included in that.
I think it was a V M W switch.
Yes, that's it.
All right, anything else? Anybody? Lou, John? We appreciate, we know how busy you're over there.
Well, anytime you guys have questions.
You know what I think would be valuable? What, as Ashley said at the very beginning, if you think it was tough to put a, put a stay-at-home order in place, wait till you're trying to take it off. So we, we've tried from the very beginning to have consistent messaging throughout the, the city and county if we can. I would like for the city and that, that you guys and Ashley and us to stay in contact you know, every 10 days or two weeks to make sure that we understand that when somebody takes their order off, or we can anticipate when that order may come off, if the other people don't. So that we stay in good contact and, and we kind of do it with your understanding and your understanding that, you know, that may premature. Now, you know, it's not wait too long because we've got, we've got people who are counting their pennies like that.
Yeah.
You know, and want to make sure we're on solid ground, but we don't want that surge to show in August. We think we took it off too low.
Yep.
All right, I think the key is the surge capacity because what I read around for this today, tomorrow, or September, people are going to get the virus. So that's, you know, I think that's misconception that people have. At the end of the day, shows there's a way to treat. So I think from the city's perspective, we're always going to be asking the right question.
The state CDC are starting to loosen some requirements. One of the biggest things the CDC just did with the guidelines was the critical protection workers. Whereas a week ago, they would have been getting contacts with the case within the mandate of 14, you'd have been monitoring them. Now, they can work. We still monitor them. There are situations in place, they have to wear masks, they have to pull ups, they have to sit in the car. But there's things I do, but they can work. So the CDC is working on their end to try and lessen things, which means we're going to start seeing cases hot. But hopefully in a controlled, accurate pace. I forgot where it was at, but you're going to start seeing changes. DHSS is now putting out the official case definition that they have a lot of different diseases. They've got the official one done for COVID-19. We'll probably start seeing cases hot. And it won't be for anything current. They're going to go backwards, they're going to go backwards to cases that presented and see if they were a probable case. If they were, we're going to be hit with another, a talent. And it may be something that was a month ago. But they're now looking at how they can define this, how they can get a better grasp on what probably was and what was.
But the recovery rate on this is still 99%, close to 99%. And I saw, I take Sunday statistics. I think there were 109 deaths in Missouri and 95 of the people over 60. So while it's, it's a threat to everyone, don't get me wrong, it's still the compromised. They're, they're most at risk and those are the people that are dying. If COPD, diabetes, things like that, those are the people that are dying.
Yeah, actually, I don't, I don't think that age, you know, but I, I don't think, I think the severity of the illness is age and properties has a lot to do with it. But young 20-year-olds can get COVID just as easily as 60-year-olds. It's, it's their ability to recover from it that's, that's different.
So better immune systems and trauma.
I think that was a big misunderstanding at the beginning that, oh, this is not the first stage. No, I can go out, I can do what I want. No, I, everyone is just susceptible. Our small children are just susceptible too, but they're much more like.
But it's interesting, the governor of Texas is starting, is starting discussions about opening up. We heard the president yesterday talk about it. It's coming, we're, we're going to have those discussions soon. So when people, but there have to be guidelines to opening up. And then we go back to the tearing part of it, uh, we can consider that, but, I mean, it's still a difficult, difficult call.
To be sure. And the input from everybody is most appreciated.
That's why I think we can stay in contact with this. I don't know, weekly conference calls, but we need to be in contact with all these entities do. Because we, we could say, hey, we're, we want to open up. But if you're looking at us straight in the eye and go, ah, bad idea. We would certainly weigh that heavily.
Sure.
Yeah.
I have a quick question for you. Why do, or is this actually true? I've seen it somewhere that if, say someone has a heart attack and dies at home alone, and they also have the COVID. Are they counting, like, I heard they were counted as a COVID case of death, but that wasn't the cause of death. Is that true?
I don't know.
Can I just read the case? Yep, it is the same with the flu. So if somebody has pneumonia, they also have flu. They may have died at home. But the flu may have shown at the edge. So they're counting it as COVID, just like. Got you, okay. My understanding that is not how it's.
I'm sorry?
My understanding is that's not how it's being handled in other countries.
Yeah, I read that.
Andrew, you got any questions or clarifications or?
Anybody else? If all minds clear? Thanks so much again for being here with us. We shake your hand, but how that goes. It makes me nervous, I don't want to talk about us older folks.
Thank you, thank you, Ed. You very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, Josh.
Yeah.
Does that little ding mean somebody's made a comment on the thing?
I don't know. I thought that was somebody's phone. It sounds like the Price of Right or whatever. Or, uh, it sounds like it's like a game show call.
Oh, maybe we've got to tune in to our channels.
I don't. Very nice. Very nice. Are you happy?
Are you ever happy?
Yes. Not when I'm with you. There are a lot of things that could have been.
You have a, you have a point personally, which is possible, which you can clarify some of this stuff.
I read this in an old one, but I get dozens of them every week.
Conrad, Dave, you. Oh, yeah, we've got some, uh, Teresa's one on this other thing too, right here.
Well, I've tried a couple of times on social media, correct? I gotta, I gotta call from my current assistant, stay off. Okay, so I don't comment a little bit more, but that's where it can be correcting most. So there's thirty-three people that you know of this.
Some of the ones that we know are tested, we know. And the problem with this, it's, it's twofold, is, you know, the governor made the order that and mandated to give all these addresses to nine-one-one to emergency responders. How can I give them what I don't know? And then, oh, hang on. And then DHS, DHS made another thing that last week on the sixth, they mandated that the only person that gets reports now is them.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
So I.
Are we presuming that, that what Phelps Health does that, that they are following up with those people?
We spoke with Dr. Gurrell. Um, she said that her staff is supposed to be following up with them at three, seven, and fourteen days.
Okay.
Now.
That's something.
That is something, but they're not.
Those, those, they, but are they then giving those addresses to emergency responders? But it doesn't really go to emergency responders. It goes to the nine-one-ones.
And we spoke to multiple providers about, or I have, about the ease of the testing at other sites. All they have to do is write an order and they just can't, not do that.
So if you, so if we get a positive at a quest lab, or even if we get a, a negative, but maybe a presumed, maybe it's. And we get, so from a quest lab, does anybody know about that?
They will administer the vaccine.
And they'll send it back to you and then you'll follow up on it. Okay, so what you need are the, the, not the positives from Phelps Health, but you need the ones that they've advised to quarantine. And you've asked for that and you would think they would want you to have that because that's a lot of manpower.
It is a Missouri state statute they have to do it. Whether they report to us or they report to the state, if they suspect or confirm a condition. With COVID nineteen, they have twenty-four hours to review that.
So is your sense is they're just so easy to be aware of?
Well, and I don't, they don't want to worry about it. It's, so it's falling through the cracks somewhere. And a lot of people are falling through the cracks somewhere. And our inconclusive one that we have fell through the cracks.
So do we have one in Phelps County?
We have that inconclusive.
The repeat test came back negative. And that's probably a heck of a problem.
We are getting, oh my goodness. Yeah. Tore apart for things that are not hard.
That's right. We got broad shoulders. I would make that call.
This is not. Every meeting for four to two. And said that, um, she signed it, but they said that wasn't good enough.
And sign the stuff.
So actually that one positive, something.
Yes, we just need to raise this.
Not a heck lot we're doing, but.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
I think we just accept it.
We don't take action on that.
What is it?
It's the mineral that force.
Yeah, no, no. FYI, yeah.
Or it's entered into.
That it would be too.
Coffee, Brandon?
Uh, please, please. I'll, I'll give you, there'll be a Girl Scout cookie in it for you. I don't know. She's her assistant, but I don't know who that is. Ask, uh, our HR person, maybe they'll know. Well, Lou would probably walk by site.
March tax day.
Not anymore, huh?
I heard somewhere, or read somewhere that it's, you have to be filed still by tomorrow, but you, if you have to like pay in, you have to pay in.
You're not gonna do much Facebook.
I just, I fall down a rabbit hole. Like I just sit down, I read, then I read something else, and I read something else. I don't know where.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
See ya.
I hope not, because two of, two of my three sets of taxes were not filed.
Man, three sets.
The one that's aborted is filed. That's the one that gives me, uh, some money back for my, for paying my employees for the last two months.
Yeah.
I should get that check this afternoon.
No kidding?
Yeah.
My, uh, my bank sent me an email saying that, uh, the stimulus checks are gonna start dropping to the bank account tomorrow.
I'll look forward to that. I don't know how to find my bank account though.
Are they gonna make us pay that back?
No. No, that's a stimulus.
Cause I, another thing I read, just articles that, um, it's going to be coming out of your twenty twenty tax to be filed. I'm like, how, like?
Oh, true. Now the, like my small business side, you know, I have, I have to figure out what my payroll is for the next two months.
Right.
And then I have to make sure the seventy-five percent of that is paid in payroll in the next two months going forward. So that won't, that won't be a problem.
Do you think our kind will ever recover?
It's gonna take a while. It will, it won't fully recover till the restaurants get open, I guess.
Right.
That means we'll be back in full, full swing. You sure?
Yeah, I've got water.
Oh. That doesn't do me any good. I gotta have a little of this stuff.
I already had my extra cup of joe.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome. I'm glad I got it over here. That was a.
Oh, most appreciative of that, yeah. Stay at home order, depending on what the governor does. He may not act, but it'd be better.
His is up before hours, right? His is up on the twenty, five, two hours on the twenty-fourth, or is it just the opposite?
Yeah. I'd like to go back to Travis Elliott's, uh, comment. Weeks ago. Steady hand, common sense, measured approach. In reference to COVID nineteen orders.
Well, I like this because we've got, we've got one, two, three entities out there. Ours is four. Now I want to include St. James and that, that we've got those five entities trying desperately to stay on the same page. So when, when we make this next move, it's a measured move. It's consistent messaging. We don't have, hey, people in St. James go to Raleigh to eat because St. James shut us down, or vice versa. We want the consistent messaging.
And that's, that's one of the things, uh, that, that I saw, uh, before the governor's order was that if, if all the surrounding counties adopted a stay-at-home shelter-in-place order, and we did, we would have an influx of, of folks from Crawford County who'd already done it, Pulaski County, that it would, we would get, you know, a certain amount of transient, uh, people coming here. But I'm telling you what, it can get far too heavy-handed. Uh, Michigan's governor is.
Can't buy a garden hose there.
So, yeah, paint, uh, uh, flooring, things that seeds. Seeds to grow your own garden.
Everyone needs hobbies. They're, I guess, they're quarantine.
That makes no sense.
I'm, I'm flabbergasted by, by the, the panicemic. And, and social media is a big part of that. There's so much misinformation on it. And, and, uh, that is a problem. That's a real problem when, uh, policymakers and influencers are guided by social media and not by common sense. I, I, I find that very disheartening.
Did you find it interesting this morning that, you know, our health department or, or the hospital, whatever, has been criticized because they're not testing everybody? Be it they have nobody in the hospital with COVID nineteen.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
So whether they test everybody or not, everybody's been sent home to self-quarantine, and that apparently has been the answer for everyone so far.
Are these short grids?
They are.
That's what I thought. I made short grid the other day. And it was really pretty good, not as good as CS.
But I found it interesting that nobody is in the hospital with COVID nineteen in our hospital.
I'm gonna add one thing to our agenda, Katie. I have the senior companion's verification contribution from Phelps County Commission for their volunteers support. We have office-based utilities and Doro and.
Well, it sure appears we should execute this. Are you the authorized program signature or the authorized donor signature?
Yes.
While making sure you execute the appropriate spots.
I would second that in reference to senior companions. This is our in-kind donation to that program that it is.
It slows time. We can believe this month will be half over.
It's hard to imagine. All this, you know, they can't go into senior, seniors, given all this.
Which makes you say that there's some seniors out there to count off, but they're seeing.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if they call or.
That's why I call sadly almost every day.
We get through all the shutdowns.
They alternate between who comes in.
Seniors paying. Martin von Randy Verkamp, we have signed your verification of contribution forms and, uh, they're available down here. And if you get time, come by and give us an update on how your program is doing with the virus thing and the impact it's having on our clients and our volunteers. Thanks, Ivan.
Let me write, put my trash, cancel somebody on gift. How about?
Um, I'll remember starting to get it. Um, Mark told Hazel that she can't do it anymore, like can't turn it off. So we take our trash out for the.
Just outside your door. I can do that. I'll take.
Yeah, she don't, we do it around, around one o'clock here.
I'll do that for you.
All right, I know. We put on my thing to start remembering here.
We don't fill it very fast.
Mostly recycling it. If she messes us, can you keep it available for a long? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since we don't really have anything going on, we could like a video.
Uh, Walter's truck is on in the county because I don't take this to get. I think Michelle's gonna be over with the title and the.
What do you get?
You know, I don't. Yeah, I think he.
I think it's white. That's all I know.
It's white.
Oh, it is. It's white. He didn't get.
I don't think they can find a red one.
Michelle will be able to tell us all about it. Ed's report was mostly true. Surge, that's good news.
Not only Phelps County, that's all the neighboring counties.
Yeah, we're regional. We don't have anybody in here. That's, that's pretty encouraging. One has to think that the social distancing and all has been of some benefit. You'll never be able to quantify it.
Never. That's that question that Peter raised. That's an impossible question to answer. How do you know it's working? Well, we don't.
But we don't have any. We don't have any confirmed cases living in the county, but that's why. We don't have any confirmed cases living in the county, but that's why these four positive cases, like, they were just sent home to self quarantine, I guess.
Well, it sounds to me they're probably from Pulaski County, huh? Because that's, that's who's got the bulk over here in central Charlotte area.
Which stands to reason because of their movement, their movements. Do you have something, Peter?
I was going to say that what the person said back was the main thing with that is the security versus liberty.
Yeah, that's absolutely a good question.
It is a good question. It doesn't have an adequate answer, you know? You try to protect the people as best you can. That's first and foremost.
And with, with a measured approach, you know?
Yeah. That's why, you know, the governor's order was, was a good piece of literature. It really was. It was well written. It shut anybody down. You know, it said, hey, really wise. You just keep the less than 10 people and keep six feet apart. If you're smart, you'll do that, you know? So that would be in the same business. Yeah. I mean, shutting down hairdressers. I mean, if you can't, hairdressers and dentists, you know, you can't, eye doctors. You're up in somebody's business just to be able to do that job, you know?
I think a lot of people think that you're taking away their rights. And I think that's why it's like so many people have an issue with the state headquarters and stuff is because they're taking, like, they think it's a way it's
I have the right to make other people sick. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a little hard to swallow. They're having a similar debate with this tracking with the cell phones. You see that on the national news. We can tell they have an Apple and who was it? Any rate, the cell phone companies can tell where you've been and whether or not you've been close to someone who's been exposed.
Oh, really?
If you sign them for this app.
Really big brother, isn't it?
It's big brothers. The question becomes then, privacy versus Well, it's even gotten so far as to the use of drones to enforce stay at home orders. And the use of a drone to me would be surveillance and you can't surveil without a judge issuing, you know, an order. So, you know, it, it is difficult. It is. Tough decisions for sure.
Was it the governor of Virginia that mandated that somebody was going by churches on Easter Sunday and taking down license plate numbers?
Yeah.
Did they sending out tickets?
And then because of social media hysteria, there were nails thrown in the church parking lots to flatten the tire.
So now there, if the government tells you you can't go to church. That's, is that the second amendment?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I watched our service on, on TV.
I watched the Vatican. I couldn't understand it. But I watched it. I watched the Good Friday service at the Vatican. Here's this huge St. Peter's Square with about 10 people, 12 people. Yeah. And then there's the Pope sitting up there all lit up. There's this crucifix facing the Pope going down the bottom of the stairs. It was a crucifix. It was in the church of Saint Lucius. And it's credited to people. People prayed. It was crucifix. And it keeps having black flags. People started praying. People started praying for this to black flag. This was the crucifixion, sort of the steps that they used in the Good Friday service.
Wow.
500 year old crucifix. That's kind of cool because I mean, you talk about quiet. There's two lights on, man. One on the boat. Trying to get our acquisition temporary construction easement there for the Martin Stride Bridge. There's been no movement on that. I'm going to try to get a hold of this property.
Well, the virus is so dead down there.
Yeah. And so, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to try to pursue that. Jeff has been trying to I haven't, he does not have the cell phone number.
Good luck with that. Hopefully that can move forward rather quickly. What is July we're talking?
We, we sure like to get that bridge started in mid to late summer. I asked Jeff if we could construct this without it being very easy. He said it would decrease the cost significantly because they would have to set up larger equipment in order to, to pick the beams off.
I think your, your folks are ready to do it, aren't they?
Well, I think so, but, but this all may have slowed them up a little bit. I can hope.
Okay.
Hopefully get that going. That's, that's an enforced project for people to work, you know, building that.
You bet. Jumping subjects on your, back to previous, if I may. When, do you guys remember when the city of Raleigh, or when does it expire?
It was the 11th tonight. Here in front of me.
Have you guys seen where some high schools are trying to push back, like graduation? And like, they're like doing like proms and stuff, like they're pushing them back to like next year.
They've been wrestling with it. I feel so bad for these young people. Would miss their graduation or their prom or any of that. Well, the kids that play ball, you're trying to get to the state championship.
Right. And like these kids that are going like to college and it's about scholarship or trying to get scholarships. You can't.
That's right. It's, yeah, it's up and down the line. It's pretty, pretty tough stuff.
Was it April?
May.
It will, it will continue to be effective till 8:00 AM on May 11.
There it is. 8:00 AM. That's an interesting That's your city council meeting, perhaps? No, theirs would be, they meet on the first Monday, first and third. So the fourth would be your city council. St. James decided to go with the governors and pass no others. Okay. All right. Well, ours expires this Thursday.
Exactly.
So we'll have to call the ball this Thursday. The governor's expires the 24th unless you renew. See to Raleigh's.
How did we pass that, Randy? Did we pass it that we go along with the governor? So if he amends his, we are automatically amended? Or do we need to draft it or clear our minutes that we, we agree with you amendment? How do we say that?
Ours is in effect. We, we have the authority to pass a more stringent ordinance than the states, but we can't make it any less stringent. In other words, if he says, stay at home, everybody's going to stay, whether we, you know, want to relax it or not. So I think that
I, I think ours is unnecessary redemptions.
Agree.
It's possible, except for this one thing. If all of a sudden we get a serve in Phelps County, we could make it certain if it's in place.
Or we could
I mean, so I
We could pass another.
Well, we could, but I think it's premature to rescind it because we might be sending all the rest of the
Quite well taken. We could renew it for, oh, two weeks like we did last time.
In good to May 30th.
Which would be after the governor's. And he may make the call before Thursday's meeting. We might know something by then. I fully expect him to extend it at least some. I don't see any way he's ready to No, after he goes through the pain of doing it to see any way
So we'll fix it in another two weeks. We'll be looking at April 30th, which is that.
Yes. Yes, two weeks will do that. Which probably would be in the event that he would surprise us and water his down in any way, we would have the option of re businesses until further or to the state. We, we have the option to change it on the 23rd.
Because we have two things going. We have our emergency where we also voted to follow the governors. Yeah. So we have actually two, two balls in the area, by the way.
I gotta tell you, I would love to see those restaurants and, and beverage houses back in business. Oh, man, that's just, Carol would, how irresponsible would it be if that, the nudge to do that?
And I think they would agree to do it if you told them, hey, you got to put your table six feet apart.
Oh, yeah, they'd do that, but you're still going to have a waiter or a waitress.
And you got an order here and then there's a glass between you and the person you're ordering with. We're not coming to the table to take orders. You got to order here. So it's kind of like, there's a lot of restaurants that do it that way where your order is, you come in. Okay. And you'll sit at your table. But somebody's got to bring you the stuff, but you could come up and get it. I'll sit here and I'll be over here. You pick it up and take it back to your table. They probably agree to that in a heartbeat if they could just get back open.
What about buffets? You see, oh, and you've got people showing Buffets are where you go.
You ever want to do a buffet? There's stuff on the sneeze.
That's when you just turn around and leave.
Yeah, but I believe I'll
Well, I did see something impressive yesterday. Perkins Lumber, they have set up this freestanding actually a Plexiglas barrier between the cashier and the customer. So, I mean, it was portable. It was just a, you know, gear, your cupboard. It was T shaped. Thing was a slice for the Plexiglas and everybody had one. And it just really raised your sense of security.
Well, and Kroger now has, has, has a sneeze shield there between the cashier and you. But, but then the, the bagger is, is not, you know, but, but they're all wearing masks and gloves.
Really?
And, and the stockers are out there stocking.
They have a shield that mobiles them.
Yeah, good, good.
I was driving up window. I know this this morning for the first time. McDonald's drive up window. I know this morning.
They put a shield on it.
You can shields up.
That's good.
It's a magnetic thing. It will appear to be a magnetic thing. It fits up against the metal and they slide the door open and there's still a glass shield there. You reach underneath the hand of your money and they put your burgers underneath it.
Oh, really? Well, it's, it's changed us a lot. And, and it, it's got to be somewhat effective. You know, I mean, the steps have been taken, but
Something's working.
Once again, I guess it won't ever be quantified.
You can keep it there. Entertained as Dick Elgin. Old pictures, you know, and old pictures from the twenties and thirties.
On Facebook?
Yeah. That index is where is this? Is it local? You got one I just now saw. Apparently it's the old fairgrounds, it said, but where was it? You tell us not, it's not necessarily by view of the park because it's kind of undulating like that a little bit. And so some people are surviving against the golf course. It has some subtle hills on it. What is it? And the first golf course in Raleigh, I saw that one this morning, the first golf course, oh, that's where the university golf course was then. It talks about the guys who started that little Raleigh Golf Club and who sold golf clubs, just some pharmacist or something with some golf clubs, you know, and all. And then there was a doctor here whose name I have forgotten, who was on the board of curators for the University of Missouri. And he facilitated selling that land to the university for a golf course. And so that's really first you go, that was been like, it was the 1920s, I think.
No kidding?
Yeah. None of the names of which I recognize. The four or five guys that were there. They got the golf club incorporated. It disappeared for history here. I assume Dick's got a lot of those old photos and
Probably. Bob was, he had a Bob Elgin day when he retired. How many years was he our surveyor? I got his picture on my wall. I was giving him a certificate first, but now I shouldn't guess. Now, look, I'll look, tell you how many years Bob was our county surveyor in long time. We honored him.
It was, I think Bob was already passed. Remember that was in the old courthouse and, and Jane was there and Dick was there and what's Dick's older brother?
Pico.
Pico, he was there. And I know Bob wasn't there, but there was 20 people in the old courthouse. We honored their dad for some reason.
Well, they had an old, some old survey instruments and stuff that I believe you don't need to use.
I thought where it was. That's probably why we had it. I remember going to that. It was really nice and fascinating.
Yeah.
Was Dick the baby of the three?
No, Jane is the youngest. Pico's the oldest. Dick's in the middle.
Jane would have been roughly your class?
Geez, you're younger than me. I believe Larry.
Okay, if you got anything else in this world to do.
As our agenda cleared, Katie, the ones that be walking in, we know that doors locked.
Yeah.
Get everything on here.
Yeah. Retortion, if they have a thing you sign, they will, the council will step for Walter's truck, new train stuff. Good.
All right. I expect Shelby in here. Although we called a little bridge, but written down, Chris will yell how that
Why, why not? We'd stop before we did in the meeting. We could, I guess. We tell many people are watching. There's no one watching.
I don't know. You guys can tell, but like on the computers and stuff, it'll say how many people are watching of you.
Would you ask people, have people watch?
We stopped at the other day at 11:30.
Yeah.
I'm done with this.
Six to eight people.
All eight of them right here.
Well, I get, I do have one piece of business I'll bring up to you. I've had two requests to put a stop sign at the intersection of 80, 8240, 8250. And I drove that on Friday and I believe it's probably pretty wise. At 8250. You go on Highway HH, I mean Highway Y, I think.
Yes, my thought is the road that cuts off.
Yeah. You guys have any objection?
Yes, this is Mr. Derek.
There's a stop sign there?
How are you doing?
There's a better stop coming up 8250. Would you get to 8240 goes?
Right. And 8250 is one that goes to Camp Creek.
Temporary
Uh huh. It does. I drove all the way to Camp Creek and then came back in.
Into late summer. I, I don't know about that.
Both people told me there've been two accidents out there. Because people on 8250 not stopping.
I didn't ever realize what's on the stop sign.
There's a three way, three way intersection down there by that church. And they asked for yield signs there, but I go up there and there was a family out there riding their bicycles. I said, any accidents up here? Well, now I said Would you recommend stop signs up there? You said, why would you put a stop sign? I said, why wouldn't you put a stop sign if you want to, but it's a year, first cars come through here in an hour. But I said, well, let's save ourselves a stop sign.
Pretty out there. Back in their bioterrorist.
Yeah, it's really awesome.
Yeah.
Is there a line and side issue there?
Yes. Trees all the way, two eighty, two eighty-fourty comes in, eighty-two fifty comes up, the rain like that, or it's pretty tall, it's all the way through.
So you put a stop sign on eighty-two fifty.
So let me, if you don't mind, I'll give your cell phone number.
Michelle being a little bit of a spring.
So that he can call you.
Call me.
All right, Katie, thank you.
I would, I would think that they can go out and survey that. Well, let me, let me give you his number, because I'm not, I'm not a surveyor, I'm, I'm kind of the county commissioner depending on on our engineer, guy negotiating all this stuff. And he, he's plenty capable, so let me give him your number, and he'll call us right away, and maybe we can get there and go. All right, thanks, Chris.
Alrighty. Sun's trying to come out, that's good. Way it has been crazy. Oh man, what, trying to break records, we're hot now, trying to break records, it's cold. That's good way to get the flu. Well, I tell you, you're talking to Ed about the family docs thing. Jennifer O'Malley in St. James seems to be enjoying it.
Hey Jeff, this is Commissioner Gary Dick down here at Felt County.
Did she take you, does she get a doc down there?
Cell phone number, I just talked to, she's anticipating your call.
Jennifer O'Malley, my wife prefers a female doctor.
Eight, one, one, five, three. Once again, that's five, seven, eight, you got five dollars, but five.
My kid, she gonna be there, I don't know, she'll say it's.
I think she's been, well, Hugh, I think she was here before Hugh retired, and so she already been here.
And she's not a nurse practitioner, right?
She's a Indy.
Good, okay.
In fact, I went out to get on my thyroid stuff, and the PA out there that assisted me said that she's her doctor.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
So that speaks for how a physician, I think. I'm being directed to two people, Paco's called, and that her, Paco's. They said they're both really good doc, but it's hard to get into, well, I'm a purchase. I want my relationship like I had with Doc. I could, I could literally call Doc at three o'clock, he's kind of coming up soon. Sure, come on, we'll make room for you. We sit there and talk about our kids for the first half hour, you know, because our kids went to school. The next half hour would say, Doc, it hurts, I'm gonna do this, and say, here's a pill.
I heard you say something about a stop sign.
Oh yeah. Eighty-two forty and eighty-two fifty, Gary, it's, it's eighty-two forty is the main road that goes there off of Highway Y.
Right down to the end.
And eighty-two fifty comes up a little bit of an incline to get up to it. And people, I've had two calls asking for stops on there, and I have had a call before a few years ago. It's common sense that people stop coming up to that road, but apparently two people have decided that it's not where they stop.
We got one there close to Camp Creek Church.
It is, you go down eighty-two fifty, Camp Creek Church sits at the end of that road.
You know, that's typically, what do they call them? Country intersections.
Unregulated.
Yeah, something like that. We don't put many of them up, but there may be, the state actually said, would you start putting those in the penalty? Yeah, because people start counting on it.
If it would be one lone person, I'd probably say, ah.
But is it this one here, right? This intersection?
Eighty-two forty and eighty-two fifty.
Right there, no, you're on eighty-four.
Oh, oh.
Eighty. Eighty-two. And eighty-four forty.
This eighty-two forty and eighty-two fifty. Stay on eighty-two forty at the end, or. Eighty-two fifty, stay on eighty-two fifty eventually, comes back there to Highway Y.
Right? There, here, oh, here we go. There.
And that's an incline, you can't really tell it there, but see eighty-two forty is the main, is the main part of that.
And that is a.
In parts it is.
Eighty-two forty is. So they want a stop sign.
They want a stop sign, they need to go on eighty-two fifty, entering eighty-two.
Eighty. If it's, you know. But that would make.
Yep. You never know.
One thing good about it is, they don't think that cattle can catch it.
That's good.
And, but there's been a couple of major meat processing operations shut down.
Smithfield, South Dakota, does five percent of the nation's processing. It shut down, it's at two hundred, did I read that right? Two hundred employees come down with it.
Now, now that is. That is in itself a wee bit suspicious that, you know, to for that to occur with you know, in the Pacific, I know they're close together, you know, when they're in there, but you know, why, why would that particular industry? I'd like to see the demographics, I guess.
Well, there's like four thousand people in that plant, they work in that plant.
And so that would be like five percent, and does that make cities nationwide, or is that?
Would be a cluster, I mean, not unlike a nursing home where everybody's packed together, and somebody gets there, everybody gets.
St. Charles, you see that fifty-five people showed up within fifteen deaths.
One's got thirty-five, yes. By the nursing industries.
That's a hotbed of compromised immune systems.
Oh, sure, sure.
Was causing her to take my diabetes so seriously.
Really, I just had three cookies.
I figured if I were in a restaurant again. I don't miss shopping, I don't miss anything, but I miss going to restaurants.
Yeah, a lot of people, a lot of people made that comment, that country bobs, you know, that's where you get older. Sneezy.
Well, we will.
Yeah, you're right, Larry, that just, oh, public house, just making us sick, Applebee's, and Coles, and, you know, just all, it just makes you sick.
They've all put my park gun pickup. Yep. They were, I've eaten, I've eaten at the tropics, I want to help Mike out there, but I've eaten at American Taco, at least three times. You know, Ron, Bell, they're the star of that.
It's all takeout?
It's all takeout. Yeah, it's a new delivery.
So do you, do you call, or?
High school there, I stand and talk with Ron while they fix my food.
And that's permissible, because I went up to Bandana's, and we onlineed it, and, but just go right there to the bar and pick it up.
Those people like that, you know, Ron, there was a fingernail place next to Ron, and so he had a deal that when those people, their lease ran out, that he would take that over, so he took that over.
Ouch.
So I assume it's paying rent both places.
Well, he only gets some assistance, well, no, his rent wouldn't have been established back.
I don't know how that worked. What he told me is that his employees can make more money being unemployed, so it all. There's gonna be a lot of unanticipated problems. You know, his thought is, you know, getting some money from the government to keep payroll alive, kind of went out. You know, that Lou made an interesting point there, about reopening is truly a function of what capacity the hospital has. Because if you reopen, oh, we got a surge, a hundred people got it now in Thomas County, hospital can accommodate it. So I thought that was insightful.
Yes. I was a little puzzled, I know the one story was covered in the paper, in fact, about the one case, Springfield, related to Springfield came up here positive and quarantined here. Why the other three, I've never, I didn't realize we had three non-residents confirmed in Felt County.
I didn't know it either.
And how that all came to be, I can imagine, but.
But they had told me on Tuesday, we had twenty-four cases, we were waiting for results on the dead tested. So they should be back by now.
Can you, will you get, now could you Google Abbott Labs quick test, or Abbott Labs COVID test, and see what they, it sounded to me like, as I mentioned, as far as Silver Bullet, and it's like nobody's talking about it.
The problem is, they can only do four or five per day. I think on that test, perhaps, on, on one machine, the gun to machine, but that machine can only accommodate a finite number of tests, and it wasn't very many.
Why would it be, what would be the limiting factor?
I don't know, well, the the specimen has to reside maybe in it for a certain amount of time, or, I don't know.
They said five, fifteen minutes, a negative, come back five minutes, positive takes fifteen?
No, positive, five.
Is that what it was?
A negative. Yeah, they, they, because it has to jump through more.
Oh, sure, that would make sense, yeah.
I haven't seen. Abbott Stop.
Abbott Lab.
There it is.
Virus chest. Promises versus reality.
That's what I'm reading here, promises versus reality. This is spokeswoman Darcy Ross, and the CEO of the company have been careful not to overpromise, acknowledging their point of care rapid test will only be a part of the testing solution for coronavirus in our aim to health care workers and first responders.
Am I? The president showed it in Rose Garden? I guess I screwed that.
I was thinking, you should have said, I didn't just say.
The toaster-sized machine sells for forty-five hundred dollars.
There it is, right here.
Murphy Booth, Sealy, Murray, Stavros, front runner in arm races, Gulf, Gulf Fisher, it's all game changing. Low scale results corroborate return normal arm with knowledge.
Well, the fact that they have some sort of machine here at Felt South, but they just can't get the reagents that's necessary to perform the test, which would be a reagent that would calibrate the machine, and then another reagent that would solubilize, or, or put into suspension of the specimen. You know, it's just a, you know, you put a few drops of whatever it is in there, calibrates the machine, then you get the specimen, you put it in the holder, hit it with some reagent that solubilizes or allows the machine to read the sample.
You scroll it up. A slow reader that I've caught up. How about it out there? Yeah, really awesome. Here it is, positive five minutes, negative thirteen.
I, I, if you, what's this? In the outside world, experts say rapid tests likely will play a smaller role. One more often named that the sickest patients expand the benefit the most from the five-minute positive results. I think that's completely backwards. It would be, if I'm wanting to go to work, a five-minute test would be important to me, if you're already in the hospital real sick. What?
Well, I suspect that it impacts the rest of the hospital population. They don't want, if you, they want to know whether or not you got it, so they got to know whether or not you're isolated.
Well, I think, I would think they would isolate anyone with very severe symptoms, what, I mean, that, see. Nope. You can always tell the of the, of whoever's right, yes, because inside Abbott's message has been much more subdued than the administration's type. It's just so slanted.
I'd like this spaceship, five hundred thousand for rapid test. They adjust worldwide of eight hours for your journey, so.